I just made a hesitation.
Yeah. We can we talk about it. There's a whole big thing.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our planning commission meeting this evening. It's Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. The well, present are Larry Henry, Laurie Thomas, John Wallace, and Ted Mickelson. Right now, expect Severn to be here shortly. We'll go ahead with the public hearing. The public hearing has been posted according to state law. There's three areas of topic for a public hearing tonight. One is a proposed new ordinance regarding vehicles parking on the street. In essence, it says any vehicle that parked on the street or alley or upon any public property continuously for 12 hours or more between the hours of 1:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the morning is subject to ticketing or towing. The second area for a public hearing is a change to our city code 11-3-7, which pertains to a boundary line adjustment where lots are being combined. Two lots are more are being combined into a single lot. That ordinance is posted on our website. And the third area of topic is a change in our city code 11-4-2, which has to do with a subdivision making improvements to the designated subdivision before recording of the final plat. Right now, we only have one option available for subdivision to pay fees, post a bond for that. And the state requires us to have two alternative means for bonding of that. So that ordinance change would allow for a second, I want to say, second option to bond for the subdivision improvements. So we'll go back to item one, parking. Are there any comments from any present that you'd like to be made regarding item one on parking, towing, and pounding of vehicles? Mr. John Wallace, please.
So, I like this, by the way. So, once this runs through and gets approved from the council, will this get carried to the level where it can actually be enforced? I know it's got to go to some county level in order for these things to... Is that the intent is to take it all the way through?
Yes, that's why it's being done so that we can implement that on a county and have county support for going down.
Thank you. With fire and plowing, this would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, item two, the city code Title 11-3-7, boundary line adjustment for lot combinations. We've been doing it in a roundabout way, but the state code, there's a specific way that they've designated for cities to do that. And it's more streamlined than the way we have been doing it. So again, that is found on the website, the draft, the actual wording. Basically, we're taking it from the state code. And we have a number of those going on from time to time, primarily with Summit Creek, as they adjust some of their lot boundaries. So it will be used. We're not just going through motions here. So are there any comments on that? Are there any of those present? If not, then we'll go on to our third area, city code 11-4-2, having to do with another means of posting bond for subdivision improvements before recording of the final plat. And that is attached here to... I think that's, is that posted, Jody, on the website too? Those are included with your information sheets, the wording of those changes of ordinance. So are there any present who care to make comment on that change? If not, then we will conclude our public hearing and go into our agenda, our regular agenda for planning commission meeting tonight. Laurie, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? And Ted, would you offer an application for us tonight? Most present, Sam, which is a date with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our honor and every where grateful we could gather here this evening as community members and members of the planning commission. And be able to meet about the business of the city and to grateful for the those that volunteer to these positions to help out with this. And we appreciate all that the communities leaders do. And we're so grateful for our community and our freedoms that we enjoy in this country and those actions which we get to pursue and to take. And we pray that that will help us, that we might be able to be guided into making those correct decisions that will be best alternatives for the community and that we can continue this service. Pray that that will add some of these actions this evening. We say this name, Jesus Christ, here.
Next item we'll go to is any public comment. Would ask should there be any? They limit it to two minutes. Are there any here present that wish to make any public comment on any item? Are there any that are zoomed in that wish to make any public comment? Do you see any indications, Jody, of any? I don't. Okay. We'll go on into our business and discussion items tonight then. Item eight is approval of our July 20, 2022 planning commission meeting minutes. We did not have a meeting in August. So July was the last time we met. Those minutes were drafted and sent to all of you. I didn't get any comments for change. I don't really, don't remember any. That being the case, I take a motion on minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the July planning commission minutes.
Okay, Laurie Thomas, motion first, and Larry, second motion. Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Hi. John, you'd be a voting member.
Tell Severn shows up.
Severn shows up, so thank you. The next item we'll take is any thoughts or discussion on the items of the public hearing tonight. The first one is the change to 6-1-3A5 on parking, towing, and impounding of vehicles. Jody, do you know if... There was some question, they're subject to a fine of, is it up to $750?
That's what was written.
That's what I... yeah.
Okay. So I think it's timely. We're coming up with winter time and when we really need the vehicles off the street for snow plowing. Any, any discussion on that?
So, once this is passed, assuming it's passed through the council, would that, would that information be disseminated out to the public? Just as a courtesy of awareness of them?
That's a good point, and I think it's, yeah, important to do that.
I think it should.
So we'll, we'll make a note and make sure that, once it's approved by the council, that may go in a newsletter or something like that.
Is there any change to the policy that you're changing, or changing it from eight hours to 12 hours?
No, 12, eight hours was initially proposed, but as it was further reviewed, they felt to extend it to 12 hours.
So, but this already is a policy?
No, it is a proposal.
Eight hours is a policy right now.
Is it a policy now? Okay, I don't like that.
Okay. Why do we not want people to park on the streets in the summer? I understand about plows, but why are we concerned about in the summer?
One of the concerns is access for emergency vehicles that are parked on the street. Others are parked on the street. Sometimes it's hard to get through. And we've had some challenges with some of Summit Creek activities.
Especially the construction activities? There's been a few times we couldn't get out of our house without driving up over the hillside.
We've, we've got some stuff going up on Eagles Nest, too, where there's some pretty big shavings going on.
It's difficult for garbage kickers as well.
Because their roads aren't really wide.
We're kind of challenged with the construction because we try, we encourage them to park off the street, but sometimes they're just, there's, there's no room on, on the lot with construction materials and things. But if they can, if they can organize it better, then, you know, all on the same side of the street. And we talked to, we talked to builder about that when we have a reconstruction meeting with them to, to pay attention to the parking. And that's something that our, the sheriff will be kind of monitoring and looking after. An idea is to give them a warning first time, but after that, then to take it.
Yeah, it's, like, for instance, when we responded to that vehicle fire on Summit Creek a few weeks ago, as I was driving engine down Summit Creek, because we come from the top down, there was a section there where I had to slow down. It was dangerous, a lot of construction equipment. And meanwhile, I see a lot of black smoke coming. So obviously, we're trying to get there safely but quick, hitting the whole lot. And then plowing, I want to go into the nightmares.
I told my wife, call my mom, mom, it's just to get someone in trouble. Because they completely blocked off the road above our house. They had a big, it was a big guy. And construction vehicles parked both sides of the road. And then they had a concrete pumper truck set up in the middle of the road.
And that doesn't...
You could get out of there.
Yeah, you can.
And if there would have been an emergency down that road, you wouldn't have got an emergency vehicle down there.
I don't have the construction by me, but last year and the year before, when I did, it was a nightmare for lots that are going through it. Now I actually have tons of sympathy for it.
Obviously, we would have, because then you'd get in trouble for calling.
I'm just thinking, sometimes you see people who have just resurfaced their driveway and have cones blocking their driveway and have to park it out in front for a night, maybe two nights. So those would just be warned.
It's continuous, those are continuously 12 hours. So they park the car in it, but you can...
Continuously 12 hours.
Or, or between 1 and 5.
What's that?
Yeah.
Or between 1 and 5. If they were there from 1 to 5, they would be in violation. But hopefully, they would just be warned and ticketed.
I think there's a voice of reason when you see stuff like that. Because I, my actual neighbor did their driveway week ago. Their cars parked out there for a night or two. That's fine.
Yeah.
There are, there are habitual situations and then random situations.
Any other thoughts or comments? If not, I'll take a motion on item nine for referral to the city council.
Some moot.
A first for motion. Run that in first motion, Ted.
I saw moot, what were you saying?
I'll stick with that.
Okay. First and a second to approve that, forward to city council. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next item, item 10, is a boundary line adjustment and lot combination. And this, as I mentioned, actually is in compliance with the state code. So we use their process.
Very detailed, covering rights of play and all of everything, I think. Everything is covered.
Yeah.
How does this differ from the current?
Jody, do you want to address that?
You don't have to go into tons of detail.
We've sometimes done a subdivision, a change in subdivision plat. And...
This will just make it easier if someone's combining two lots. Instead, we have residents who sometimes will just go down to the county and do a lot line delineation. But they're not abandoning utilities. There's easement issues that come into play.
This addresses all those.
And that's what, this will make the process a little bit easier, but it also keeps the city in the loop. So we can take care of those types of issues that...
And also provides for an application to the city, right?
Yeah. But if there's an easement down the center of the property, we know now that, you know, we've got to do something with that easement. If there's utility down it, then utility...
So, in the past with the county, if the person all intuitive in the general properties, the county would let them delete the line?
It would.
And they have.
Without any, any interaction with the city at all?
Yeah, we've had a couple of residents that have done it.
Yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if it's in place, then I can contact the county, let them know that this is our policy. Here's our application. I'll give it to our mapper. That way, if anyone comes in to do it...
They can refer them back to you.
They can refer them back to us.
And I don't think the county did it. They did it internally? I don't think they were aware of it.
The first thing I would think they would do is send it back to the city. Yeah, that surprises me.
And we've, we've received some of that time through our council for title companies also. So they're not acquainted with the state statute.
Is there a fee to have this? Oh, there is only $50.
There's a recording fee that they have to pay.
Do we need to worry about standby fees? Willensure impact fees?
Yeah, it's a good point. Because once they've combined lots, legally, it's one lot. And so if they're paying standby fees on, on two lots, they'd just be one lot. And when they go to build, they're building on one lot, not two. So there's just impact fees for...
Let me throw the hypothetical on that, then. So it said they do that, but for whatever reason, build the structure on what would have been just the one lot. And let's say 10 years down the road, they want to subdivide it again back to a two lot situation because the building's setbacks allow them to do that. Are you going to collect those standby fees retroactive?
Water rights.
Will you require the second lot in order at the time to the subdivision to, before they connect the system, to supply the water rights and pay the impact fees for that additional lot? But I don't think you can retroactively recollect the standby if there was, if it was a single lot and only one meter.
We do not return the water right. So that's...
So when they combine the two lots, they give up that additional water right? So in order for them, if they were to do it, I just hypothetically proposed they would have to acquire more water right for that.
Yes, yes.
Well, that would more than compensate what the standby fees would be. All right, I'm good.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Other questions? Do you want to have a copy of that?
Sorry, I have a speech here.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the recommendation on item 10 with the boundary line adjustment, lot combination.
I move that we do that.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Ted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, send that recommendation to the council. John's been voting for you, but now that you're here...
Yeah, now I can just say.
Okay, item 11. City council recommendation on the subdivision improvements before recording a final plat, 11-4-2. And again, this is done to meet state code. With this, having an alternative, having at least two, two ways of options for a developer to do that if they so choose. Any comments or questions on that? The statute is included there. We had two or three ways before we went to confirmation. And really, based upon recommendation of our then-city engineers, we just took it back to one. And then reading the state code and realized that at least two, two alternatives are required. So we've got three in here, which are more common. This has been reviewed by our city attorneys. And so they're, they basically are the ones who, who wrote this in light of the state code. So it's up to the subdivision which alternative they want to use in this process.
Well, all three of those, because of prior past situations, are all three of these? I know this is standard because I've dealt with this.
We had a cash, oh, extra before.
Oh, yeah. Cash is always a good option.
And that was the only one.
Assurance bond, in theory, would work. The irrevocable letter of credits concern me sometime, but I guess it depends on the institution.
One we had before was they could put up property.
As collateral.
As collateral, and that's been done a lot. So we learned a lesson from that. Okay, I'll take a motion then on number 11 to, for recommendation to city council for approval.
I move that we recommend 11-4-2 to the city council.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, I want to go into the discussion here on the general plan. There is a grant that the city has been given for use in doing some visioning with what the city's all about, what it, what it wants to be. And we've got an individual with a company that's owned by Jones and DeMille, who's going to be helping with that. We're going to have a series of weekly meetings, not weekly, I think monthly meetings, to, for people, collect some people to come in and have some discussion about that that would go into our general plan as what we would want the city to be, to be focused on, to be known for. This will take the place of any of the sections of the general plan. We still need to move forward with those in looking and seeing what adjustments we want to make or need to make with that as we look forward at this point. Some of that visioning could affect that a little bit, but we'll, we'll work that into the process where that, when that develops. So I'm still wanting us to work on the assignments that we had for the different parts of that general plan. And kind of, you, this visioning will probably include some survey possibly at the end of it as well to get citizens input. So if there, if there are thoughts that you have of maybe a few questions that would be helpful in those sections, I would think those could be easily added to that survey. There's no point in doing multiple surveys with that. So start giving some thought to that if you think you'd be interested. And we will have public input as well to those who choose to do so. We'll have a public hearing on it. And so we'll take public input at that time as well on any part of the general plan. So anyway, your thoughts, what you're, what you've been able to look at and ascertain so far, or as you've reviewed the sections that you've been assigned, any...
What sort of timeline are we looking at this? We've had several meetings for a few months.
I think a couple of months, yeah. For them to do their visioning.
It's a multi-part process. The visioning is just the kind of the first part. Are there other parts to it? I think one of those, maybe if I remember, we were talking with Carrie and the planning group that's leading it, as part of that will be a training and education process on doing general plan, general plans, to help give guidance to them because, just background, a lot of communities put together general plans, which are great, but they tend to be very generic and not really action oriented. So the idea is you start with a vision first, and then that guides your general plan. So you start with your vision of what your community is going to be or what you want it to be or continue to be. And then, then once you have that, it helps guide you through your general planning and not just be, because, because I was reading that through the trails section. You know, the trail section said, "We want trails," is basically what it said. Great idea, which, which is great. Okay, what does that mean? Where do you want trails? How do you want trails? What kind of trails, you know? And that's where, if you decide what kind of community, you have that vision of what you want to be, it can help guide your thought process through trails. So if you get more specific in action to, this is where we want trails. This is how we want to build. These are the types of trails. Here's where we want it to go. We want to be walkable community. We don't want to be walkable. So that's kind of the idea. So once they get to the visioning also, there's some, there's some training that will go on as well, I believe, as part of that that will help guide that general plan.
Okay.
Process to become, so you can develop a plan that's more specific in action.
I would hope that when that time comes, we can take advantage of that, participate in that training that they will give to us.
I think they actually come to the planning commission meeting if they want to.
Oh, okay.
And they'll help give reviews and comment on your plans and just, you know, make suggestions and stuff like that.
Good to know. And that's something we do need because I think we're fortunate. Five, six years ago, I think Sarah and I were probably the only ones on the planning commission.
Dave.
Oh, Dave, yeah. But we, we had a guy from MAG who came and helped a lot in that. But I think the strategic plan, we, we need to make it more, more useful, I guess is the best way of saying it, and use more. We probably don't use it as much as we really should. There's things in there that probably guides for us that sometimes we overlook, forget, don't pay attention to it. But I think if we have some detail in there, and that's, that's really what it's for, is to divide the plat, is to guide the city in its development. And so in that manner, it could be quite specific with how it covers these, these topics. So I think it would, it's helpful to us, it'd be helpful to the city to have that, have it in place and use it. Send a disqualifying motion.
And I think that's the critical point, and use it. Because I don't think we've really used it to this point.
Yeah, not much.
That's where I think it would help you make it a little more action oriented of issues, you know, something you can use.
Have you had any experience with general plans, John?
Just got going here.
One example he often gives is really think through what you want the community to be as you work through the vision and general plan that, that suits the... as you work through the vision and general plan, that, that suits the nature of the community. And he gives an example of Parawan, where their guys somewhere saw sweet rolls. I don't think everybody down I-15s see that a Parawan known for their sweet rolls billboard. Some guy said they wanted to be known for sweet rolls. And if you drive in Parawan, a gas station will sell you a sweet roll. That's about all they got. But that is what their vision was, is they want to become known for and he is, it was the craziest thing, but so that was their vision for their community, you know, worldwide for sweet rolls. But they don't make sweet rolls there, you know. So that's where he gives the example of what not to do. You know, don't just think, "Oh, we want to be this." Who's going to drive to Parawan to get a special sweet roll, right? You've got to think what you want to be.
When I lived in southern Arizona, I would stop in Carillon all the time to talk with guests, never recognized that they were known for sweet rolls.
Yes.
So less very affectionate.
No, it's not. It's not. And I think the only place, according to him, I haven't stopped in Triida, but I think the only place he says he gets sweet rolls is in the gas station. So he said really think through it. I mean, that fits your community, you know, don't just pick something and it's way out of, I know there have been a few things kicked around for this area, but.
Okay, any other comments on that? I think Santa Cruz could be known for their scones. There's a restaurant down there that makes scones.
I talked to the Pason guys quite a bit and they're still trying to figure out how they got known for onions. They were trying to change that a lot of that, because their logo had an onion in it. They were trying to change that.
Vision.
Okay. In your packet, there's a copy of an ordinance that Ben, thank you, wrote, a draft, and I, I asked him quite a few questions about it. There's a lot of, a lot of questions to be asked about it, but they're, Parks Trails and Recreation is looking to, what started this off is they want to limit, at this point in time, the size of UTVs going up to switchbacks. Want to limit it to fifty inches. And their plan is to put mullards in the, in the, put the trail in so that other wider vehicles, mostly UTVs, and we've had a couple of instances of people trying to drive a Jeep up there and, and a Nissan Pathfinder a while back. So that's what started it and looking to change wider elements of our trail ordinance that needed to be changed. We don't have much of a trail ordinance. There was one that was going to be, that was part of our codification that due to the, all the concerns with the codification and including ordinances that hadn't been, some people felt probably better that it was taken out. So that's, it's still out there, not as an ordinance, but just as a draft. I responded, I think I sent a copy to you all about my email to Ben with the questions that I had, you know, depending on Bill. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I missed that, I think.
I thought I did, but I maybe didn't. Anyway, one of the, one of the questions I had was, says prohibited to use any type of motorized vehicle on improved trails, except with city approval for events, emergency, or maintenance purposes, or if used by a person who has mobility disabilities. They appear in front of the definitions, identify motorized vehicles, any type of motorized vehicle, ATV, ETV, et cetera, or any means of transportation that is propelled by an electrical or gasoline motor. So they're prohibiting, they proposed to prohibit motorized vehicles on improved trails. Popular now are electric bikes. So potentially they've eliminated using electric bikes on a improved trail.
I mean, C, they're forbidden.
C one says he likes scooters and other personal devices. He's got, he needs to change that. Aren't permitted.
Yeah. So there's just some things that they haven't thought through completely.
Okay, so one comment, it says motorcycles are not permitted, scooters are, but some scooters are so big, I don't know what the definition is, but you can have really big scooters that look like a motorcycle. Also, if I'm disabled, does that mean?
There's a scooter propelled by?
Drive my car?
Say again?
If I'm disabled, can I drive my car then? Well, it says that if I'm disabled that I can.
So there's, there's some issues here that need to be.
I mean, he's, he's not insisting between B definition for motorized vehicles and the last sentence of C. One says you can do it, and the other one says you can't.
So if they want to limit it, they should do something about the weight of the vehicle rather than classifying it as a motorcycle or scooter? But why don't we want those side-by-sides to be able to go there?
The problem with those is the passing, you can't pass what potentially not backing up and finding a place to turn out.
So are we talking the switchback trail or the proceed?
Switchback trail.
This is.
It's.
So I'm thinking there are two different.
This would apply to the switchbacks.
To the switchbacks?
Yes.
So I was thinking there are two different, you got like city trails.
Well, number three, it says it's prohibited to use any type of motorized vehicle with a width greater than fifty inch width on a, on a natural trails within.
That means dirt.
Yes. Yes. Not, not a paved trail.
Not paved trails.
Yeah. But as we develop trails, they will start out being dirt, eventually depending on how they're identified, try to pave them or, or it's costly. But if it's in a possible development, then we, we ask the developer to do that. But what we're looking at here mostly, I think, is city-oriented trails that are, you know, existing in this city. Now, I'm confused. Are you, are you aware of the Summit Creek, what they're willing to do for the city or what they're committed to do?
Summit Creek has a trail that mountain bikers, that's a little over a mile or more.
And it's not technically, it's not explicitly available to us.
Unless you don't live there and then they'll yell at you from somebody that I know that's dealt with that. I don't go over there.
Now Summit Creek has said they're not going to police it, you know, so if people.
Person I know that is in your ward.
Yeah.
Has been yelled at when they're over there by residents.
Yeah. Anyway, the, what Summit Creek has agreed to do is to front upwards of ten thousand dollars to the city for trails, for our own trails. And to provide, how much was it?
Eight, four, uh. Five hundred a lot?
Five hundred for each lot that they sell. They will donate to the city five hundred dollars for a trail system within, within not Summit Creek, anywhere in the city. So, and they would front the first, I guess, twenty, twenty lots with, with money set aside for that. So there will be money, it'll be limited, but there will be money that can be used to help develop trails within our city. And we're, the city's looking at that and that's something that we want to try to give some attention to, and discussion about putting trails on city property that we have. A lot of the city property is drainage and so the challenge is how you incorporate a trail in a drainage channel. Most of the channels are large, so you don't want to put the trail along the side somewhere. But also possibly put trails on top of sewer lines. So you've got a combination of, of a sewer line running down an area and a trail on top of it. So there's some things that we're talking about and Parks Trails and Recreation has been talking about that as well, different ways of better accommodating and getting some trails in the, in the city. So those are some of the discussions that have been had on, on trails and how best to proceed with them.
Okay, one thing that I don't like on part C, number three, it says that it's prohibited to use any type of motor vehicles with a width greater than fifty inches wide on all natural trails. I think that it's okay to say this trail is for mountain biking and it can be narrow, it goes from here to here, but I think it's okay to say this trail, we can have side-by-sides on or, or no restriction. But I don't like the "all" because I think, I don't have a side-by-side or a four-wheeler, but I think, I see people driving them around very slowly, nicely, a grandkid on the back, and I think that's fine.
Where do you live?
Oak.
Because they don't drive slowly and nicely in front of my house.
We do down like, my street, some retired people with a little grandkid and I think that's fine and I think it would be nice if they had some trails where they can.
So those of you having, just too much natural speaking tickets.
Well, natural is dirt.
I thought natural meant dirt, not.
Yeah. One thing I talked, shared learning about is, because something like this work approved for switchbacks, for example, to have an understanding that it was temporary until such time as work could be done on the trails to have a cutout. So, so you've got a place to back up to, not all the way back down to the beginning of the trail to pull it into for somebody to pass. And have that understanding so that, you know, this will be temporary until some of those kinds of things could be built into the switchbacks.
The fifty inch is becoming a standard across the Los Angeles front for most motorized trails.
Forest services mandated that too. But that eliminates, that eliminates a whole lot of.
Big TVs.
It does.
Your Articats, your Kawasaki's, your Hondas.
Honda's made fifty.
Well, I, I looked at, looked it up, the sport ones are forty-eight to sixty inches, the utility are fifty-eight to sixty-four.
Honda, a few smaller ones are fifty. My brother-in-law had one, but I, I'd never take UTV. I've been in a UTV up that trail, I'd never go again. It's scratchy, it's so narrow.
It's not wide enough.
You got trees just scratching heavy out of it all the way.
That's not wide enough.
I've taken a fourer up there several times, no problem. UTVs, I would never, even if you get a turnout, just trail hard to sell.
It's too dangerous.
So narrow with all those overhangs that it just scratches me happy. I felt bad because we did it for the mitigation when we went up there with the National Guard. It was a National Guard guy that drove us up there. And he brought his own personal UTV, it was man-made.
It wasn't new.
Yeah, yeah. Boy, by the time we got down, I says, "I hope you're not making trouble to your wife." And he just sees his face all white. He was, he was.
But there's a lot of UTVs that are beat up and people will take them up there and they don't care, you know.
My girlfriend Chris helped me up there before, they got scratched.
Yeah.
We took, it was quite hilarious there.
So, yeah, I think it would be, I don't like the "all." I think some trails can be designated walking only or dirt bikes or maybe you have one that's wide enough to drive a car down.
And again, this is kind of targeted at the switchbacks. We really don't have other than.
You don't have anything against it.
Other trails.
They've already got mullards at the switchback at fifteen inches. No, they have mullards and a chain.
They haven't put them up yet.
They've put a chain up, they have, they've got the chain, mullards with the chain across there. So I know we've had to do the chain a couple times on up there, but I don't think they're fifteen inches.
No, it's, yeah, they haven't done that yet.
It's just a chain.
It, it's take, it's a land use, change of land use, so it takes an ordinance to, to put that kind of restriction on. So they're, they're going back to the drawing board to look at this draft and see how they need to change it to better not have conflicts with it and.
So in terms of, of land use and city boundaries, would the city only take in the first one or two switchbacks, correct?
About two-thirds of the trail is the cities.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, most of it.
Yeah, about most of it's the cities. But you're right, I mean, once you get up to that last kind of hairpin turn, then it starts worse with the cities. So from there, the city really can't regulate.
But starting out, they can, so that's the key.
I didn't realize the city property went up that far.
So just wanted to acquaint you with it and kind of tell you what the city's working on and the Parks Trails and Recreation Committee. So if you have some, let me ask you this, if you have some thoughts and suggestions, which I'm sure you do, send them to me and I'll send them on to Parks Trails and Recreation for them to look at and factor into their, what they're doing with this. But I, I envision this primarily, this being the switchbacks here, if you don't mind. And the, the other ordinance that we had drafted dealt with different kinds of trails for the city, although we didn't have them, but we were putting our ordinance together at the time and identifying, I think maybe just two different kinds of trails. One, like the switchbacks, and the other was a paved trail for walking and running motorized vehicles would not be allowed on that.
The only other question I would have is, I have a two, do we know what the slope is on the switchback trail?
No, and they didn't know, I'm trying to think what, what they said for twelve percent.
That one would limit to just pedestrians.
Well, because I was with Ben last night, John, on this. So the intent of hit on the twelve percent is meaning more of not switchback area.
So should it be?
So that'll need to be trails and walk. Yeah, some additional verbiage or clarification.
Trails and walkways other than natural trails?
Something like that needs to be added, yeah.
Okay, I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Do we have a littering policy in the city? Like in the private, it says you can't litter on the trail. Can you litter anywhere and is that redundant?
I don't know, so is that walking their dog? I don't know that there's a restriction on them picking up after their dog.
How about a horse?
I get dog poop right next to my driveway four or five times a week that somebody leaves there with their dog.
I get it in my yard. I mean.
I know it's not tent, but I, I clean it up, I clean it up multiple times.
I get my dog.
How about a horse? Are you required to pick up after a horse?
A horse defecation is a different product than a dog.
Says it here.
Well, you're right.
Says it here.
One might be great and one doesn't as well.
I, Jody, have you, have you had any experience with that?
Cleaning up after a horse?
No, littering.
No, in the city, but if you're not after animals, that they're out in the public.
I was taught seven years ago about requiring horses owners to clean up after them on the trails.
What about dogs? Do people have any about dogs?
That's why we've got the bags at the.
The park?
Park.
That doesn't do any good over by the touch.
But maybe we should put those at the front of the switchbacks as well.
I'd rather get like dog, they'll pick up after it, so that's my view.
I don't think there's any bags there anymore in the park.
Oh, are they out?
I've not even seen a stand.
Stands are in the vicinity.
Is there a requirement or is it just a courtesy that the city's putting those up there?
It depends who you talk to.
Do we have?
There is an ordinance.
We do not have an ordinance. We do have an ordinance, I think, that says littering though. I mean, are you going to classify that under littering? I don't know.
Littering's just statewide, isn't it? Miscommender or something like that, what is it? It's a fine. They don't, if you throw something out, drive them out of the highway, you can get fined.
If it's.
Even if it's banana peel and natural.
I take it it's.
Anything that goes out your window, sunflower seeds, you can get fined for it.
Really?
Yeah, so be careful. I always thought you could throw like banana peel or apples or stuff out.
I think that, that's city's edge.
I learned later that you, anything goes out your window.
You learn the hard way, it sounds like.
I didn't get ticked, but I asked him to talk about one. So, doesn't mean to stop me from throwing my banana peels out there, but I did ask.
But you do litter around now.
But I now know that it shouldn't.
I've always thought if it's organic, you can throw it out, because someone will eat it.
That's my thought too, but he told me not so, if it goes out your window.
If you throw out an apple cart, can't you just say you're planting an apple?
I think it's more of a hazard thing than littering thing, but throwing stuff out your window.
Okay, it would be interesting to see if the city council would approve of something, citywide, something like that. I have my doubts.
More things to.
We need to make a list of what's safe to buy or not.
I think the thing we really need is turkeys and deer to poop and everything.
There you go.
That's right, we'll talk to you about that.
Problem than dogs.
We learned that those were just coffee beans.
Who was it that posted that today? Oh, it was Michael Reed, right?
Oh, yeah, posted that.
Posted that, oh, free coffee beans.
He's just, he's got too much time on his hands. So if you have some thoughts on it, just send them to me, a little narrative, and I'll forward them to the answer. We'll eventually get around to, I think, refining some things here and seeing where we go on it. I just wanted to, if I can change since I put this number fourteen on the agenda, discussion of a preliminary platte of Summit Creek.
Oh, sorry, one more comment.
Sure.
They're talking about limiting the cars, but on their survey, most people want them allowed, so that's.
I found that sort of kind of confusing with some of the answers. Because if you.
Can I say something about the survey? You guys know I'm on the PTR community, right?
Yeah.
I'm an executive member on there, so you're a full disclosure, okay?
Well, thanks for bringing that up, I meant to mention the survey, and I didn't, so.
Yeah, so, so the challenge of the survey, is it's done a year ago, close to that, I guess, remember?
Almost two.
Yeah, it's been a year plus, I think, I don't think it's been close to two, but it's been a year plus.
It was likely in April, wasn't it?
Long story short is, as we were working that behind the scene, we're trying to keep it unbiased, and then due to some communication errors or whatever, it got sent out before the committee signed off on the final draft of it. So that's kind of why it has not had much done, because we weren't sure. The committee as a whole, I will just say that as a whole, was not comfortable with the way it was packaged, just because of some communication errors. So having said it, if you see some confusion, that's probably part of what some of those concerns were on our end as well.
Well, are there plans, future plans, having to do with another survey or anything?
I would love to do that, but it has not. I'm not aware of anything in the near future. Unless, unless the PTR committee's given a, a suggestion or a mandate from planning commissioner of city council to pursue a broader scope, you know, maybe add some other variables in, which I think would be great, so. Yeah, when this went out, it kind of was a cart before the horse. No mal intent, I think it was just a miscommunication and.
Okay.
It just kind of got ahead of themselves on it originally, so.
But each question essentially stands by itself with the responses.
We wanted, we as a committee wanted a stronger check on who was actually filling out the survey, not just what you said. We wanted a way to maybe verify or validate residents versus non-residents versus whatever other categories and that. And, and that hadn't been packaged in the way we had hoped it had before it went out. So at this point, it's just whatever you said, if you fill out the survey, you can say you're a resident, you're not, and there's no way to verify that, no way to validate it, nobody. And so we, we wanted to kind of get some data that was resident-specific, non-resident-specific, and kind of group it somehow, and it just didn't get packaged that way as part of it, yeah.
Likely, though, most of it is not by residence.
I would like to think so, but I don't know, you know, the twenty come from one household and the other two hundred from everyone else, there's just no way to know. Those are things that we were trying to work into that, that just didn't get worked in before it was sent out.
Well, even if there was multiple responses from the same household, I, I would consider that valid, if anybody has an opinion on.
Yeah, as long as it was the same quantity of vehicles in the house, you know.
Yeah.
Same person filled out twenty times, yeah, you'd be, so, there's just no way to verify that, that's all I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
So at this point, you just kind of have to take it out.
Okay. Who, who's, do you have trails assigned?
I do.
Okay, look, look through that and, you know, get a little bit of idea of your thoughts on, on it and.
Ben and Janet are very actively involved with our committee on this, they're present, you know, just kind of as they as long as and that. So again, appreciate them and their input with it, but it's, it's, it's a healthy dialogue, so.
Okay. Very good. Ben, is your question, Marty?
But if you were to want a broader scope survey or something done, by all means, you know.
Well, something considering, yeah, we'll think about it. I know, one thing that I remember from the last survey we did was, I love trails, the ones are not in my backyard.
Exactly, I was just going to say that, that, that's just the human nature in us all, we love these things, we either want them in your backyard. It's what we call NIMBY, not my backyard, but most of us have that NIMBY thing, great idea, just not right here.
Yeah.
You know, and so, so again, that stuff has to be factored into these responses, everybody likes it as long as it's not there in front of them or behind them, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know there's some traction out there, some trails running through some, and I don't know the full gamut, but I think kind of over behind you. And this isn't our committee, by the way, okay?
No, that's behind me.
Isn't behind, no, you're a different one, I know there's one over here.
Some trails or people.
Some ideas being discussed or at least verbalized that I'm hearing, that are not formal, but just some thoughts.
Or just ideas.
But it's the NIMBY thing, you know, it sounds great, but all of a sudden, if it's going to, you know, like from down your backyard or your, well, I guess you and he.
Now, we're different.
No, you're across the street from each other, yeah, so you'd have your backyard and your backyard.
Well, there's no use, man.
Not you, but I know there is some other stuff.
There is, there is behind, behind.
And so I know there's some discussion on that, again, I'm not, it's not coming from the PTR, okay? But I have heard some things out there, so.
Okay.
Well, I remember when we, when we had the old house up there, we had the last one. There, on the map, it shows a trail going up beyond on those, behind those lots that are on the east side of the hills.
Or by Sky Lake and all that.
And there was one lady that was so intense with that, that we could have a trail going on her backyard? She and Jeremy Searle were talking about that for a long time, I remember us talking.
I, 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 I could picture them talking.
Yeah. Okay, just on item fourteen, Summit Creek had given us a preliminary platte, a new one for their project. And we were waiting for some more information and for fee payment and so forth, and they pulled it back, they want to make some changes.
So the one that you sent out to us, they withdrew?
Yes.
Okay, so that.
So I don't know what.
So a question for you on that, there was a platte G that was kind of an isolated set of acreage down further. It looked like it's kind of by Walentines.
Yeah, that's part of their development down there.
So, but it's not Walentines, it's just some acreage adjacent to it?
Right.
Okay.
So we, we don't have anything yet.
Okay, so they.
Imagine they'll be making changes to what they have and submitting it to the city again, so that's where that's at. Fifteen, sewer connections. I put this on the agenda, with a thought in mind of, we've got into a discussion, the staff did, a couple of days ago about impact fees. And what the city might be missing out on because of lock combining. And since learned a little bit more in talking to Ted primarily, that sewer impact fees are really, they're not, they're passers for us to the city of Payson, because we have no structure to handle sewer. And that's the intent of the impact fees. We have a water impact fee because we have a water service, we have water tanks, we have a well, water pump, things like that, that the city supports the residents with. And Jones and DeMille is in the process of doing this study on our water right now, to see if our impact fees are in line with what they should be. So the sewer is pretty much out of the picture, although we, we've received complaints in the past a little bit from Payson because there's not been a sign up to the sewer system the way that we thought would, there was not likely the development that, that would respond to that. And so Payson hasn't been too happy with the funds that they're getting because there just haven't been that many development going on. We, there is a.
All of the new homes in Summit Creek.
Yeah.
Well, even where I'm at on Eagles Nest, that's all in the sewer system too, yeah.
So the, we, we want to keep, keep that in mind. And make sure that the city isn't, not collecting enough impact fees to support the infrastructure that we're responsible for, as well as making sure that we're collecting enough that for, that goes to Payson, or we could run into problems with them.
Because Payson, they, they collect the connection fee, right?
They do.
Is that a hundred percent pass through to them then?
Yeah.
Jody?
Yes.
And then the monthly fee, the base fee or the roof?
It's pretty much a, very little is counted.
So they get all that, but obviously the volume's not there that they were hoping for.
Correct.
A lot, a lot of talk to me once about this too.
Impact fees are tricky too, because you can't charge an impact, an impact fee is charged to a developer, right? And, and that's to reimburse the city for impacts to the system that the city has paid for, in other words, they don't want to put burden on the existing system. So if the city didn't pay for the infrastructure, nor do they have any debt service obligated to that infrastructure, then they can't collect an impact fee. Because they, then in effect, they're double dipping. Because they're, they're requiring the developer to pay to put it in, then they're going to collect the impact fee for people because, to support that development that was put in that they paid for. So if the city hadn't paid to upgrade the infrastructure for development, for example, like a water tank, you know, when we build a water tank, we don't build a water tank just to support, like, like if we have a water tank that's undersized for existing residents, you can't collect an impact fee to upgrade that because existing residents paid for that. But if you are building a tank and you want to oversize it to support growth, you can only look at six years in an impact fee. You can only go out six years as all for growth, you can look at growth for the next six years. And if you need a water tank to support growth, whatever percentage of that water tank cost is to support the future growth, you can include it in an impact. But you can't include a percent of this there to support the existing residents. So it's kind of tricky because you can only include things that are to support development that the city is paying for, basically.
Did the city pay for the sewer line when we put it in?
Developer to developers.
All the developer paid.
Yeah. And Payson services that.
But who has responsibility to maintain?
And that's where the user fees come in. So the user fees are what pay for maintenance and operations of the system. And users back into that.
Yeah, that's the monthly fee that we pay.
Payson has responsibility to maintain our sewer system.
Yes, and they came and scoped it, what, a year or so ago, Jody, you're in the head?
Two months ago.
And they weren't happy.
And if you collect an impact fee for a improvement towards growth, you have to also use that impact fee for that infrastructure within that six-year period. So for example, please include a new tank or an upgraded, a larger tank, or new tank or whatever, part of that goes for growth, and we collect fifty percent of the money through an impact fee for that tank, we have to spend that money on that tank in the next six years or so.
In fact, just to heads up again with my background, TSSD was just Tipanova's Sewer Severance District, which services a lot of the North County, out to Eagle Mountain and Saratoga and all that. They had bumped their fee, this is ten, twelve years ago, a lot, basically dealt with it, collected for it, and Ivory and Edge Homes took them to court and won, and they'd collected eighty million dollars and the judge, the, the, basically came back that forty million of that was legit and they had to rebate back forty million dollars, I got a bunch of checks.
The state rule, state code is very specific on how you collect an impact fee.
And for, half, within five, six years, yeah.
And they just did a new study, and so we do know that the impact fee will go up come January first of twenty twenty-three.
Which is par, I mean inflation, everything, yeah, it makes sense, but ongoing, that makes sense, but you do have to justify something, say, and otherwise it could be challenged and sometimes it doesn't.
Do we need to worry about that where Payson has the right determining the?
It's not your problem.
Okay.
Wasn't there a discussion going to the city council? And I thought, that's what we were going to discuss, whether or not we were going to require all new houses to connect to the sewer where it was possible within, what was it, two hundred and fifty feet? Was the state rule on that?
I think that's, that's already in place.
We already do that.
There's a state, Ted and I talked about.
There's a state rule on that too.
It's a three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet, what the state rules is.
But we need, I'm not sure that we're. That hasn't been incorporated into our code, I don't think.
The requirement to.
Uh huh.
To match that.
Well, that's, but I thought that's what we were discussing, is whether or not we were going to put it in the tank.
Correct. And I guess, because I don't think it's there.
Do we need to though?
If it's state.
If it's state, I don't think you, I think.
And usually the county won't approve it for a septic tank if you are within three hundred. Drew Rasterson over at Environmental, whatever, is really.
Environmental Health.
Yeah, is, I'm, I'm going through it right now, and we've been through it, and if there is anything within three hundred feet, he will look and say, uh-uh, you got to bring that line.
The state put this rule into place a while back for the very purpose of, all the septic systems that are being installed are impacting groundwater quality. And so people have wells, and specifically comes down to what they've been finding is they're finding, they call it PCDs, in contaminants in groundwater, which are basically medications, sanitary waste, they're starting to find those types of contaminants in groundwater coming out of wells. So now that's additional treatment, you have to make it in the groundwater to do that, and they're finding this going for septic systems. And so they're trying to limit, where they can, the installation of septic systems, and that's where that state rule came into place, that if you're within three hundred feet of a septic system and you can connect to it, that you're required to connect to it. And the, I think the rule also says the city has to make it reasonably cost effective to do it. You can't, you can't charge someone outrageous cost to connect to it, you just have to make a reasonable form to be able to connect to it.
Can, can you explore that a little bit further, Ted, and see if there's anything that the city needs to do to incorporate that into our city code? Or is it sufficient the way it is, with the state code being that way, that the city, that residents are bound by that being part of the state code?
So. In the last, let's say, four years, have any homes been built with a septic tank that are within three hundred feet of our septic line?
Sewer line.
The sewer line.
I, I understood that we've got some homes in, the few as they might be, in Thousand Oaks, who have, who are on septic.
No, I, I, I get that, that they were built before we had the sewer line complete.
No.
Well, but the sewer lines were not complete until within the last, what, six, seven, eight years?
Six, six years, yeah.
It was after we built our house.
I know.
And the county made me put in a fifty thousand dollar septic system because we flunked the protest by a quarter of an inch.
I, I understand that.
I understand anyway.
So I'm, I'm trying to focus on one question. And that one question is, have any homes been built where they're within three hundred feet of the sewer line that have a septic system in the last four years? And if the answer to that is no, then we don't have an issue.
And I want to just research that a little more, because I, I'm thinking the state rule says, regardless of whether you beat the sewer or not, if a sewer comes af.
You could have been in there thirty yards, and if the sewer comes up there, you have to, I do know that.
I think that's-
Okay, then that would be, that would go back to what Wayne was saying, where there are homes in Thousand Oaks who had a septic system that we may need to require them to connect to the sewer line.
Would they have to-
That's why I'm researching a little more, because I think that's-
And I think most of those homes up there in Thousand Oaks had the dry line.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of flipping a switch at the house. And paying a connection fee.
If it was, if they were building a septic-
Yeah.
They were supposed to have a dry line, and that was in a development agreement that we had with Don Meechum. However, there were a couple that-
Probably didn't happen, would be my guess.
May have not happened by certain builders.
So we need to do a little research on that and see where we-
I'll take a little question just a little more, because I, I know that other cities we do work with, that's just their policy, and I don't know if they, the question is I don't know if they go back to the state, or do they have their own policy that-
It, it, kinda is ours too, but I don't know that there's anything written in our processes that absolutely require that.
And I just want to clarify if it is retroactive, basically.
Yeah, I'll just have to look at the state and you can just mimic whatever that is.
And if we don't need it, there should still be something in our ordinances that references that, so that-
Hmm, we don't want to get into that game. Our ordinances are messy enough.
Well, the nice thing is you don't have to blame the state too, because they're already mad at the state.
Well, but that can be just the, the checklist that the, the site plan committee follows. You, you don't need to add an ordinance.
The problem to get into is if the state changes it, then our ordinance is out of sync with the state.
What I, what I'm saying is if, if I'm going to build a house, I, I need somewhere that I can go that says you have to have sewer, or you can use a septic tank.
But if you say, here's a state ordinance that requires you to have sewer-
So is that on the checklist when you do a whole-
No, it's not on our checklist.
No.
But maybe that's all there is.
But the county does ordinance.
But the county has to sign off on your site plan, and they have to give you all the documentation.
You're talking about for the septic tank, right?
Yeah, however, we do have reference in our code that we have adopted the state IVC IRC code, and IRC IVC also has a sanitary drainage and plumbing code that we adopt. And so I'm wondering if that would follow underneath that? Or is that, is the sanitary drainage a totally different section of the state code? But I thought it was part of the building code.
Well, there's a plumbing code that we adopt as part of the overall building code.
But we adopt all, the whole IRC IVC, and we've just been through this whole thing. And there, drainage did come up in there as being part of the adopted code. And so that's why I'm wondering, sanitary drainage also applies to that, and therefore we're adopting the state code anyway.
Could be.
See, I don't, I don't think there's an issue.
I mean, when we do the site flavor review now, we look to see whether or not there is the county statement approving the septic, or whether or not they're going to come up to the sewer.
Okay, that's my question. So generally, it's where the house is located.
Depends on what it's in the city, yeah.
Required to hook up the sewer.
It says-
But in fairness, we're not looking at a three hundred foot, we just know kind of where sewer lines are and where they are.
Yeah.
So, and what it says the rule, which is kind of interesting, this is the actual state rule, says in order to defray the cost of constructing, reconstructing, maintaining, or operating a sewer system or sewage treatment plant, a municipality may require connection to the sewer system if the sewer is available and within three hundred feet of the property line, of the property with a building used for human occupancy, and make a reasonable charge for the use of the sewer system. And later down, if a person fails to connect to the sewer when the connection is required under subsection two AI, which is what I just read, or fails to pay for the sewer services required under applicable municipal ordinances, then the municipality may cause the water to be shut off from the premise until a person has hooked to the sewer or paid in full service or services.
But that seems to say in one place, nay, in another place, will. Except there's a disclaimer in that where it says, or, you don't have to connect to it if you pay your monthly fee for it, even though you're not using it.
I'll clarify that, because I believe, and I was just wondering, you have some other cities, and they actually have it in their code, like Ivan City, or some kind of a few others, they have in their code that they have to connect it.
Well, that connects, that would be consistent with what the state says. The state may require. Yeah, but it also says that you either have to connect or-
Pay.
Pay the monthly fee as if you had connected.
Well, under the first part, it doesn't.
No.
Says they require a connection if you're within three hundred feet, and the city has to make a reasonable charge, and then under the second part, it said, uh, where did I go?
The second part covers right there.
If a person fails to connect to the sewer when the connection is required, or fails to pay for the sewer service as required under applicable municipal ordinances, then the municipality, so they could do, if they, if they fail to connect, or, or fail to pay for their sewer service, then they can shut off the water. And I don't think that was like, I'm not reading that as, if, if they're connected and they're not paying their fee.
That's how it should be.
Because that was, I think they're intending that fee.
I understand that, but I, I know of incidences not in Woodland Hills, in other communities, where they put in a sewer system and required the citizens to connect, and quite a few citizens opted not to connect, and they didn't have to connect through legal action as long as they paid the monthly fee, even though they weren't using it.
Wow.
Well, so they were on septic then?
They were, they stayed on septic, they paid a monthly sewer fee, even though, because for, for them to do that-
That was cheaper than hooking up.
Yeah, well, they would have had to do, I mean, the people involved in that were in an area where they would have had to have a, a pump, because, because of their location, and they would have had to dig behind their home, all the way around their home, and back around the front of the house to connect, which was, was cost impossible for them.
I'll call the state, because I don't care over the argument of environmental quality there.
I'll call him. Just clarify.
Okay.
It's like a sewer standby fee. I'll provide each, each of you with the reference to that code and see if you can-
Thanks. Um, good discussion. We, I went to a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago on the road system that the state is planning ahead and looking at, and it was put on by UDOT and by DOT and by, I think, the League of Cities. And so they looked at three different areas, they looked at the roads, they looked at public transportation, and they looked at trails. And they had these focus groups, there was probably, oh, maybe fifty, sixty people there. And invited city groups and then talked about, they had a facilitator at each table from either UDOT or DOT, and the facilitated discussion, they're putting, they're putting all this, they're doing this throughout the Wasatch Front, and trying to determine where they are going to need roads, or where they can connect in with primarily bicycle trails, using bicycles as both recreation as well as transportation to work, and where they were going to run rail lines in the future. It's interesting, they had, there, there was talk and projection about running a highway coming down Redwood Road and coming into Saratoga Springs up there, coming down a little bit further, and going across Utah Lake with a bridge, trying to alleviate traffic congestion and things like that. So it just, I just wanted to share those, for that project that's ongoing, it will be ongoing for probably a year or so before they put any final recommendations together based upon, they were holding three different, they had one for the North County, and they were holding one in kind of middle county, and then this one was South County. They had representatives from city councils and mayors and planning commission members that, and planners, city planners, that were part of these focus groups. So it's kind of interesting to, to see and hear, hear their, their thoughts, and again, there's nothing definitive or nothing decided yet, they're still putting all this together, and will come up with a big gigantic plan that they'll be putting out, they'll be posting some of their information on their websites that they have, again, to get citizen input as well from, once they kind of formulate some more concrete ideas about what they want to do, and they'll put it out for citizen comment on state webpages and things. So, anyway, just wanted to share that with you, that's in process. It's been suggested that, right now, we have roosters who are creating a little bit of a problem in the city. And there's discussion about adding them to the non, non-acceptable, what do you want to call them, farm animals or whatever in the, in the city.
I thought, they already are.
Craig tells me it's not-
No, they're not.
They're, what I heard is they're a violation of noise ordinance.
It's a noise ordinance, but they themselves are not specifically state-
They fall under nuisance potentially if-
They're nuisance, but they aren't specifically called out.
So, and if-
I, I thought they were listed, I, I remember reading that.
I know, I reviewed that.
We reviewed it lifetime, a time again, and-
Did it, did it miss the transition with that?
I don't know, qualification, I guess that's possible. Or maybe there was a CCNR back there with Wippa or Thousand Oaks that didn't allow roosters.
It was in the-
You think it was in the ordinance?
I reviewed the animal ordinance, I remember roosters.
Well, if, and, you know, if I-
Could there find it?
If I go back to defecating on a park or building with consent of an owner, there is something there for animals, but-
Right now, there's, there's prohibitions against male goats.
Five, six, A, ten, public nuisance animals. And it would be under-
As I remember, it was a mystery.
If it barks, whines, howls, crow crows, or makes other disturbing noises in an excessive, continuous, or untimely fashion, it is a public nuisance.
So crows.
So what does it say about public nuisance? That defines it, that's, there's your definition, what can you do with that?
It doesn't exclude the animal, it excludes animal behavior.
Any animal is a nuisance if it is determined by the department to be a nuisance by virtue of being offensive or dangerous. And then, so five, six, A, would have the penalty that goes with five, six, A.
It could have gotten taken out, I don't know, but it's not, it doesn't, we've looked and searched for it in our current ordinances, and we can't find it.
Seems as, as I reviewed it, it gave a list of depending on the size of your property, what animals you could have.
It does that.
And it listed chickens, but excluded roosters, as I remember.
And the penalty for five, six, A is enforcement, um... It can be deemed guilty of misdemeanor.
Yeah, I've got some dogs I'd like to hit down with.
So I roosted behind me and I was talking, did you know that they make the equivalent of a bark collar for a rooster?
Yes.
Did you know that? I just found that out a couple of days ago, I think.
You and I chatting about that. What, the difference was, is it went from me hearing it inside at four AM to where I can only hear it outside. But I can still hear it, it just didn't go through the house at four AM. They eventually got rid of it.
Four AM is not fine. And it just says that any person violating any provision of this chapter shall be guilty of misdemeanor, and unless a different county shall be provided for such violation by this chapter, such violation shall be punished as provided in section one, four dash one, which is class C misdemeanor. So, I mean, it can be a misdemeanor.
But that doesn't mean they have to get rid of it.
No, well, there is a, eventually-
The penalty can increase.
Yeah. Loss of privilege to, to maintain an animal if you're convicted in violation of this chapter three or more, different occasions during any twelve-month period. So yes, if you want to call that rooster in three different times and be sure to have decided, then it can be taken away. We've had this issue on a, a dog actually before, and a dog owner that came in front of the city council a few years ago.
Dead deer can be a nuisance animal too.
Dead deer?
Well, it says causes unreasonable fouling of the air by orders.
Yeah.
So, I guess by your city ordinance, they're considered a nuisance animal.
Ah, that might be, I had, I had a deer.
Yeah.
I had a dead deer and called wildlife and-
Me too.
Took them three days, and he, he came and took, and I said, why didn't you just bury it, wasting my time coming up here?
Really?
Oh, yeah, he was my happy camper.
I think he was moved the next day. It was winter, so it was cold and frozen.
Harvested, yeah.
Well, beating roosters is an easy thing, because we've got, there's one line, and I forget, what's, besides male goats, what's the other prohibition, Jody?
Swine.
Swine, pigs. Just add roosters to that, if that's something that you want to do, your thoughts on-
Motion second.
David John has not today sleep lately.
Does-
No, that one's gone, but now there's another one that just started a few days ago that's a little further from me, but I'm starting to hear that, so.
Well, you know, it is aggravating.
Halfway between the middle.
Halfway between us.
Something to do about it. Like a wark dog, you know, all night long, whatever, but, um...
So if the rooster's a nuisance animal, now my dogs are pretty friendly, but if I let it attack the rooster, would it be a nuisance dog? Or would it be, or would it be helping us meet city ordinances?
Yeah.
Code enforcement.
It would be hired.
It's a code enforcement dog.
There you go. If you eat the rooster, do you become a nuisance individual?
That's true. Code enforcement, must get followed by code enforcement.
He becomes a nuisance alleviation.
You know, my neighbors are good with their roosters now, but they are really annoying when they are crowing. You know, it's so pleasant to have your windows open at night, you cannot do that with a rooster.
No, I know.
And, uh-
I got one too.
I think you should, we should ban them.
A rooster or a window. A window, with a rooster on the other side of it.
We put new windows in to block sound in our, in our bedroom. We should have to do that, we still have to.
Well, we may propose that at a future meeting here, get rid of roosters. On miscellaneous, Corbett, let's talk about your thoughts, I think there's a copy of your email.
I don't think Corbett's.
Of course, how personal.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Your basement.
I'm not, I'm not promoting.
Orbeez motor.
Because I'm-
I didn't say it.
Well, the code or follow it, actually.
Yeah, something about basements, wasn't it, someone?
Yeah.
Definition of a basement?
Yeah, I found, I have a copy of it.
I don't see it distributed. Maybe it's just talking to my mom.
Did you email it?
It was an email, it's present, but I had done that too.
Someone asked about it, Wayne responded to it.
Yeah, it was an email, I didn't email it.
Okay.
I would have bought it if I would have remembered, if I'm the planning commission. I'm sorry, I, I had a little bit of surgery this morning, and I have been in a fog all day.
Oh, goodness.
All of a sudden, I was getting the mail, the mailbox, and I thought-
Want me to read it real quick?
I'm supposed to be a final commission.
It's about two paragraphs, do you want me to read it real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to fix these two definitions, okay, I'm proposing that we discuss the following in our PC meeting this week. I think we need to fix these two definitions. For the basement, my suggestion is the space of a building where the floor level is more than four feet, below the finished grade- below the finished grade at the front of the building. I think we need to modify the grade finished definition as well to say the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading and normal settling around the perimeter of the building. Since our new height calculation may include the natural grade plane and or the finished grade plane, saying the finished grade is only at the front of the house may confuse someone because there is a finished grade all around the house. Thank you, Severn. So the space of the building where the floor level is more than four feet below the finished grade. So it's more than four feet below the finish, then it is deconservation. And then we modify finished grade to say the elevation of the finished surface at the ground adjoining the building after final settling around the perimeter, anywhere around the building after normal settling is considered finished grade and is adjoining the building.
Part of the problem that I see and the reason I'm making this suggestion is that the old definition of a basement said that it was four feet below the adjoining finished grade. That's the way the definition reads right now. And you have to go to another place in the ordinance to find out that finished grade is at the front of the building. Now how adjoining finished grade is, I mean, to me, the adjoining finished grade, if you're talking about a walkout basement, which is what the issue really is. The adjoining finished grade is right next to the walkout basement. So it's not at the front, it's following at the side of the building.
Or it could be in the rear. I have a whole bunch for me that are built into the.
That's why, and, and that's why I contended for a long time, you couldn't have a walkout basement until I finally realized that the finished grade is at the front. Now there are some in the city that have defined the finished grade at the front to say it's an average of four feet along the whole front of the building. It doesn't say that. It says four feet below the finished grade after settling at the front of the building.
Can I make a suggestion? I would revert it, not after settling, but I would use some other verbiage because you could have it backfilled and then it could settle. Not a good thing, but it could settle and then it wouldn't be four feet and then it wouldn't have fit that definition. So I would say after grading, not after settling or something to that effect.
I, I understand. And I, and I, and I agree with that because when we're making a decision on the site plan to say whether or not this is really a basement, you know, what we're taking is the elevation that they're projecting from the front of the building. It's not after settling. We don't know that it's after settling when we're trying to make that decision.
It's what they're showing on the site plan has finished grade. Yes.
Yeah. I thought, you know, even though the definition says after settling, we don't, I mean, how do we look at that when we're doing a site plan? Because it hasn't settled.
Yeah, right.
How that, how are they going to project how much it's actually going to settle at the front of the building?
You don't want it settling and if it, yeah, so it shouldn't be, settling shouldn't be part of the discussion.
So what I was trying to do in modifying the definition was to make sure we bring the fact that the finished grade is at the front of the building in the definition of a basement. It's not there now except where it says adjoining finished grade. It doesn't tell you that the finished grade is at the front of the building. You'll have to go to another definition to make that connection.
To me, they're conflicting. It could be conflicting.
Yes, that's what I'm.
Because if you're taking the finished grade at the front of the building and then you're talking about adjoining finished grade, say that's at the back of the house where you have that, where you maybe take that measurement. Well, your adjoining finished grade is gonna be at the back of the house. So say finished grade and adjoining could be conflicting issues when you're trying to.
Do, do we get in a conflict with, with that definition with our definition of the natural grade and finished grade of measuring building height?
Well, as long as we define that for the basement definition, it is at the front of the house that you're making the measurement.
So we say basement, so are we talking, will we end up with two different definitions? One for basement calculation and one for building height calculation?
Well, yeah, we've got that now. Yeah.
The basement definition is irrelevant of the building height calculation. Do you follow me?
Yeah.
So here's, not always is that four feet gonna be in the front of the house on a basement. So if you're looking for a definition of a basement as far as, as long as four feet of that level is, uh, has dirt adjoining to it, then I don't think you wanna spell it's front because it could be the side, it could be the rear.
I guess I was trying to, to fashion it in such a way that we were changing it a minimum so that we wouldn't get as much pushback.
Well, that was gonna be my question. If we want a good discussion.
We had, I, in the ones that I've looked at, the ones that I've been involved with you two a little bit about, there haven't been issues with, with factoring the basement into the height. The basements are relevant, like. Of the building. Yeah. If you're just looking for a definition of a basement, that's fine. But since we changed the definition, we, that hasn't been an issue for us.
Cause we just.
But it's, it's an issue that has been a primary issue with the Fuji Adams situation.
That's what I was wondering. Is this something we wanted cable for a little while?
But just so we don't get.
Because Megan, Megan at one point wrote a letter.
And that kind of works right now.
To Pam Anderson, when he was discussing, I can't even remember what it was. And she made, she contended at that point that, and I, my assumption is she was referring to Adams. She didn't specifically say that. But she said, that's where the average of four feet at the front of the house comes in. It doesn't say that. You could have one point along the front of the house and the finished grade that is four feet below and still meet the definition of a basement. I mean, there are part of the Adams that the basement is actually above grade.
Yeah, finished grade.
Yeah, it is. But there's also on the left side of the house, it's probably, you know, a lot, probably more than four feet below finished grade. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of a way to make it a little clearer than it is now. If I get confused on it, somebody else might get confused too.
Well, let's look at it and talk about it further. I think.
This is probably something we'd have to have public hearing on anyway.
Yeah, so you're saying if, there's two different areas that you see this information. Is that correct, Severn?
Well, it's the definition of.
The definition of basement and the definition of finished grade.
So let's, I think we pull holes out, set them out, let us look at that and then we can chew on it. Yeah. So, uh, an update a little bit. I, I don't know.
Are we finished or?
Well.
Okay.
Uh, no, good point.
Probably oughta finish.
Okay, anything else under miscellaneous that?
Does anybody come into training on the twenty eighth?
I'm gonna go to it.
I'm out of town, Billy.
Ted had a cough.
I said I was going to you back to get that. I was thinking of that too, but.
I missed out on dinner.
What's that?
We missed out on our free dinner.
I've had those types of free dinners in trade. In fact, I had one a day for a while.
They had one on this thing that I went to with MAG. They brought Cafe Rio in, so.
Kind of ties me with that one. We had a error. We lost everyone there, so.
Okay, I'll, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I love that we adjourned.
Okay. All in favor, adjourned?
Aye.